Matt Rossu, Two Under Golf Terrace. I was here at the last council meeting and I'm here again. I have my son, John Rossu, who'd like to address the city council for a few seconds or moments. His name's John Rossu, Two Under Golf Terrace.
I don't want the pool to close and and I want it to go over for a first time. It's the only inside pool and I never get sunburned. And I want to be in it some more and it's the only inside pool. And not, I really wanted to stay open forever.
John loves the pool. I think he represents a big chunk of our community, but also the benefits of the pool aren't just for the young, it's for all of our community. And I really think the city council should reverse their decision to close the the pool and its facilities. I think it's worth keeping it as a amenity for our wonderful town. I know that the park board met, I believe, last Monday. And they also are in favor of that. So with that said, I want the city to reverse that decision that was made some time ago. It's an asset to our community and to our kids and our all members of our community. The biggest group at the last meeting was that that group that represented our older generation and it's valuable to all aspects of our community. Last I checked, there was over fifteen hundred signatures for that change.org petition. I think that should be, that should make sense to you folks to reverse that decision so that we can continue to have amenities and these good things for Kirkston to bring people in, to keep people here. Swimming lessons, John got his lessons there at the community pool. And I just think it's it's so valuable to our community here and now and in the future. It's been open for fifty plus years. Let's not have this be the year that closes or next year. Let's keep it open. Let's build it better. Let's do what it takes so that Kirkston can stand among the communities in this area, in this region that we have a pool. We know how to take care of business. We can chew bubble gum and walk at the same time. I think that's not asking for a lot.
Thank you, Matt.
And and I'll cry out this out twice soon. That's the day where the pool closes.
Anyone else from the chambers? Is there anybody on the phone bridge, please? Thank you. Okay, we have one presentation tonight regarding the overview of the city funding from Ellers. Todd, thank you for being here.
Thank you, your honor. Council members, Todd Hagan from Ellers and Associates. See that it's winter up here in Kirkston, so I guess we're here there. They're here, but not in the Twin Cities. So we shall see. Again, thanks for having me at the request of staff and council, just to kind of run through some questions, if you have them for me, just kind of general overview of kind of where we'll take the financial management plan that you approved at your last meeting. We are going to have a kickoff on Tuesday, tomorrow afternoon, with staff, just to go through that timeline for the financial management plan. It will take three months to complete, but it's going to have a lot of interaction with staff and I think a couple of council work sessions. This is a great time for Kirkston to be going through this exercise. It's, I would not have liked to see it be delayed another year. The earlier the better, and thanks so much for approving that. The financial management plan is, basically, it's a roadmap, ten-year sort of look into the future of your general fund and all the other funds that sort of play off of property taxes. I know you have a utility rate studies and those types of projections. This is really on the property tax end of things, which has a lot to do with just the general operations of the city, right, and streets and those types of things as well and parks. And so we, we do know that you've internally funded capital projects in the past. And this long-term financial management plan is a tool for your future funding options. It evaluates the impact on both the city's finances and property taxes. It's a vehicle to determine appropriate funding sources and project timing. And and also, you know, we look at and prioritize those types of options. The strategy then is to look at the projects, ask critical questions along the way. For example, if we delay a project or other planned equipment purchases, you know, what will happen? What will the new tax base of future development? We've got a couple new future developments sort of on the horizon here. How does that offset the costs of paying for that infrastructure? And also the FMP, the financial plan, provides a tool to explore all these questions and develop comprehensive funding strategies for long-term operating and capital needs. So I mean, it's a great time for you folks to be entering into this. And again, we appreciate Ellers able to assist you in that too. Some more to come on that, on that as well. So we did take just a little bit of a dive into your twenty twenty-three audit. We're not auditors. We are going to be looking at probably three years back of audits. We'll look at your, how your twenty twenty-four finances have played out. We'll look at your twenty twenty-five budget. And by the way, if you need some help before you finalize that budget, our team of experts in that area can certainly take a look at what you've got. You can comment on that and provide any suggestions before you finalize it. There's really nothing we can do as far as changing the levy higher because that's set at the, at the amount where you can only decrease it by the end of the year. We are happy to help in that respect to kind of in the interim before we go through the financial management plan. So if you need help with that, let us know. So I did mention, you know, some new developments on the horizon. Maybe would require some bonding. Maybe to get out from under not internally funding projects so much, maybe some bonding might have to occur as well in the plan. With that, we would probably go in for a credit rating, right, from a standard and pores, probably not a Moody's. I think you guys are probably better situated with standard and pores. Finance. So part of their methodology is what they look at out of a hundred percent, percentage points. They look at, one of their criteria is institutional framework. So Kirkston's in the state of Minnesota. All cities, even charter cities, have pretty much the same authority, so we're all scoring at the top of the heap on that, just being Minnesota able to issue most of our bonds without having to go out for a vote like school districts do. So cities are, are good in that respect. That will be, again, weaved into the financial management plan as well. Do we bond for some? Do we pay cash for some? Projects, you know, what do we do? So that will give us the answer. So there's five, five criteria here that they look at. Economy. That's hard to change too. They sort of look at the consumer, not price index, but almost the consumer. It's kind of the county index, basically, of how your county is faring as far as incomes and population and those types of things. That's twenty percent of the score. Debt and liabilities, you don't have any debt. And but we may need to enter into some of that, and that's twenty percent of the score as well out of a hundred. Reserves and liquidity is twenty, and that's what I kind of want to touch on tonight a little bit too, is want to make sure that we've got adequate reserves in compliance with our policy. If there's any way that we can temporarily help that out a little bit and sort of repopulate any income that would help that reserve to get higher again within the thresholds of your policy. That's twenty percent. Financial performance is how you fare throughout the year. That's twenty percent. Are we sticking to our budget? Are there a lot of budget amendments? You know, are we good throughout the year? Did we hit the mark, basically, at the end of the year? Do we have a deficit? Do we have a surplus? That's financial performance, and that plays into that financial management plan as well. So that's going to help us smooth that that out over the year. So we'll know what we need to finance, we know we pay cash for it, and we know our operations are good throughout the year. Lastly, then, is management. Twenty percent of the score is some of those policies we talk about. Reserve policies, investment policies, assessment policies, things like that.
Todd, can I ask a question regarding that? You know, we as a council had a very different understanding of like where our budget was when we initially passed the resolution to make it forty-five. And I know that's not a state mandate and that really it's more of like like a certain threshold, right? It's like thirty-five to fifty-five or something, right? And I'm just wondering, as we kind of look through and look at our budgets right now, that is it that we rescind that resolution and then maybe through the business financial plan that we try to build up that reserve to that amount? And I'm wondering how that could maybe address some of our budgeting issues right now?
Yeah, thanks, Kristi. I appreciate that. It is recommended. You know, the OSA does recommend that it's thirty-five to fifty, fifty-five. You're close, you're good.
Thank you.
Great. And of next year's expenditures, or no less than five months, or six, right? So we want to make sure that we collect our property taxes on May fifteenth, we pay them, right? On October fifteenth, it's twice, it's six months. So so that's kind of the threshold. We're looking for a city of Kirkston size. You know, a smaller city would be more of a dollar amount than than a percentage, right? The higher that is, the more points we score with the agencies. We really want to stick with, if we can, we can always rescind, right? We can always, council has the power to amend and all that good stuff. So what will come out of this plan is to see if we're hitting that mark too, right? And because some, some of the categories in the audit, as far as fund balance categories, we've got non-spendable, restricted, you know, no, no, we don't want to touch those, I'll move around. We've got committed, assigned, and unassigned, right? So I think it's talking about the unassigned. Fund balances is sort of the forty-five percent is based on that. But I've also seen the policies unrestricted, right? So that's sometimes a makeup of committed and assigned and unassigned. So if if we're worried about not hitting that mark, there might be a way, I'm just throwing out ideas, to re-categorize some of that, just kind of put re-categorize some of the amounts in those buckets. So we're up to that, and then we can sort of move things back if we, if we, if we want to do that. The idea, though, for the fund balance policy is is, is to try not to tamper with that, basically. I know it's when cities, you know, auditors, we all look at that and technically all the property taxes and all that, all those types of revenues go into that unassigned balance and they kind of get re-moved around. Yeah, yeah. So so it's, it's, what I'd like to see, I think, eventually, is to have the reserve try to stay at that point, and then any extra reserve monies go to these other buckets, basically, and then we can kind of spend off of those. Because what we've been seeing in the street construction fund is some internal funding, I think, is coming from that due to and from like the general fund, right? So instead of bonding, you know, we have to get the money from somewhere, right, to finance a project. And what I'm seeing here, what might have happened, but again, we'll look into this a little bit deeper, is that quite, quite a bit of the street project fund money has been coming out of that general fund, and that's what's kind of bringing that down. But I would like to get that up. We all, right? And we can get that up either by, if that's what we need to do, is either, again, moving the committed and assigned and unassigned kind of together to get to that point. Kind of work out plan. And or we might be able to reimburse the street dollars from like a bond issue or something, right, to put that back in as well. We're looking around for the reimbursement resolution. I think I sent around in July of twenty-three, just to see if if that got passed, we can reach back. The feds don't like us to reach back more than sixty days on this stuff for this kind of, you know, like, they want us to have a plan like we're doing now, we're going to do now, and stick with it. And and only like preliminary expenditures are outside of that reimbursement, that federal reimbursement rule, but not capital, not capital costs, like if it's already constructed, constructed street project. So those are the types of things that we're going to be shaking out here as we move through this. You'll all be a part of it, the council, staff. Now, like I said, it takes a few months to get this going, and things will kind of pop up as we move, as we move forward. Just almost more questions and answers from our analysts at this point, but things that I think your staff and council are kind of seeing and have heard are some issues that we're going to look at, right? So so those are, we'll take those to heart and get that to get that squared away for us.
Yeah, I just, I just feel like we've kind of like got to this point of catastrophizing some things, and I just wonder if it's a possibility that if we're able to like lower that, that might at least help us for the year and then help us rebuild that up, or as you were saying, put those in different buckets and then like do the reimbursement. But yeah, I'd really like to see some more options there, because I think there's some things that are pretty important to the community that we need to consider.
Yeah, and I don't think we're to a point where we need cash flow borrowing or anything like that. A couple cities were working out updates to the financial management plan. We had them on a road to recovery. Staff changes, they've changed. Things go back down, we were asked to update it, so we have to pull some sort of tax cash flow borrowing to kind of get that bucket back up for the year. You look good. As far as we can tell right now, that's not an issue. And that's only for, if your fund balances are starting out really, really low. And, you know, especially if you have bond payments coming due, typically the big ones in February, you know, February first. And and so it's, it's, yeah, you can look good at at the beginning and at the end, but what happens in between, and that's where that cash flow borrowing helps. And I don't think we're there for you guys, but that, that'll also come out to see. But we have plenty of, like I say, committed, assigned, unassigned. Taking away that two point one million from owed from the street reconstruction and some non-major governmental funds at about two point one million. If you add those other three buckets, you're three point five million, right? So you're kind of back up already. So it's one of those exercises, well, you're not running out of money, it's just.
So the money's there regardless, no matter how you decide to try to make it look. Correct? At the end of the day, it's still the same amount.
Kind of a play on words, right? And it's, it's just how we could maybe at the end of all this too, or while we go through this too, we, like I say, we either re-categorize from most of my team are sort of like CPA, so they they know what's right and what's wrong on these words, right? How, how we can move them around and stuff like that, but we can also retool your fund balance policy too, right, to kind of make it a little bit more flexible as well. I think I had sent around, maybe that Ashley and whoever, you know, we talked at the quirky at the very beginning of of all this too. I did float around a couple fund balance policies that looked maybe a little bit better, a little bit more flexibility. To them, not necessarily saying forty-five percent, but maybe going from thirty to, almost like the state auditor says, like a thirty-five to fifty or something like that.
So it's within that
Yeah, within that.
Suggested time or suggested dollar amount, but not or percentage and not necessarily an actual percentage.
Yeah, just something that kind of
As hard and fast as the forty-five percent that's currently
There's some language that we can kind of work with that maybe would help us out, because what we don't want to see is going on a rating call and, you know, we're not hitting the mark, right? And we have to show them how we're going to recover. And this plan is really going to help with that. If you've got this plan and we show kind of a road to recovery, that's almost like having the money in the bank already, right? If you don't have it, that's where all the questions, because this plan, as many policies as you have, council turnover, right, here and there, right, and all that, and staff, right? So we want to make sure that, you know, these are the documents that we've been sort of, you know, have been approved and they can move around a little bit, right? Every few years, but we're not having to reinvent the wheel, basically, all the time. So everybody's got a really good look at sort of the path we're on. So if we run into a project or or fund balances an issue, we look at a plan like that, or we make modifications to it, and then we've got the answer. So that, that, I think, really gives council and staff confidence to move forward with with these projects, I think, in a good way. Probably a different way than maybe what you've been used to. I think that's, I think that's what Kirkston needs. And again, I appreciate you folks buying into that, because it's, it's hard. It's hard, because a lot of the times, if, you know, if it's been working, it's, it's been working, but
Well, it has not been working, Todd, let's be honest.
I tell you, projects aren't cheap anymore either, and that's really what's turned the tide a lot too.
So I guess my only other question is, you know, as we kind of review the different budgets here, some options that we have for today, today as the workshop. I'm wondering if these are based off of, and I guess it's a question for Jeff, off of having that forty-five percent in reserves, is that correct?
Actually, they're not based on any of the reserves, because this is an operating budget. The reserves are separate, a separate item entirely.
Okay, but do we have forty-five percent currently in reserves?
No, we don't.
Outside of this. What do we currently have?
We have forty-five percent right now. We are actually negative, because this council in this year since the passing of that budget has committed one point six five plus three point three million in additional commitments that we did not have the funding for.
And that's including what we're bonding for as far as
That is partial, that, that is a decision for this body to make as to whether or not we would be bonding for that. Bonding for a hundred percent of that would not be completely prudent simply because of the cash flows related to the bond payments that would then follow.
But that's not, if there's other pieces to that, right? So if there's other parts of those projects that come through, then that would necessarily be true, correct?
I can only project based on the information that we have on today. I can project based on our tax capacity going up twenty-five percent, but whether or not that's going to happen, I don't know. I can only project based on what is reality as of today.
Yeah, and then you're correct, you know, Kristi, on the, on the bonding part, and that's what cities typically do is for a vanilla street project with people on it already, right, to pay the property taxes and and the special assessments or whatever else, or water and sewer fees or what have you, that's typically, what you do is you take a look at, can we internally fund it? Would it be probably more like an internal, internally funded loan? That's how I like to see them. I don't like the cash just to go out one way, and we kind of we kind of just hope that, you know, we get some of it back, but actually amortize it like a bond almost, and maybe put the interest rate in there pretty much comparable to maybe the investment rate, right, that you've now lost, right, by shelling out the money for that project. We want it back with an interest rate, so it's either the investment rate or maybe at the rate of a comparable bond, general obligation bond or something. So so those are, those are strategies. Not every, not, especially these, these two business park or industrial park, I suppose Winter Show would be one of those too, right? Those are, those are tough ones to kind of get out of the chute for you folks right away, because it's not just a regular infrastructure project that's inside of the city, right, for folks that are already here. These are projects that would, it's more an investment in your community. These are increased by the tax base. And and the, and a, and a business park that's, you know, vibrant, you get this done sooner rather than later, right? So it's those types of things that council and staff have to take a look at and see, is this an opportunity? Do we have grants? Do we have most of the grants? Do grants go away after a while? If we don't move forward, yes, right? Is it an opportunity? Yes. Will it totally cash flow right away? Probably not, right, because we might have one facility being built, let's say, in one of the areas, right, that there's nothing there right now, or things need to be demolished and kind of reconfigured and put infrastructure in. The other, you know, business park too, I mean, we just don't, we build it, right, and we, we hope they come, right? So we market, 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 and we try to to generate either a special assessment or something for those folks to pay, or a special assessment and tax increment financing, something like that to help with that bond payment. But I wouldn't say that when you issue the bond, you put the infrastructure in, that that bond's going to cash flow right away. It's not. And what I hesitate to do is to back and load having just interest payments maybe at the front end and say, oh, yeah, okay, maybe they're going to come down here in the last ten years or whatever, right? We all got in trouble back in two thousand eight to two thousand ten when the housing bubble burst that everything was going great guns and then everything stopped. So we do want to be mindful when we set these up that, and we want to be realistic to ourselves and brave, right, and to see what, what that impact would be, let's say, if nothing happened, or if just one thing happened. And just see what that tax And just see what that tax impact might be. And you might be surprised, you know, with the grants coming in and those types of things. And maybe one one project out of the chute comes in right away, which would generate some taxes or tax increment. The rest might have to be subsidized by the city at property tax. So what's your threshold as a council is? A 2% increase in tax tax increase, 3%? What does that look like for the average home, like a $200,000, $300,000 dollar home, you know? Divided by 12, you know, is it a cup of coffee? Is it, you know, you kind of put it into reality, it's go, well, is this is this worth? This this amount that we're paying right now as as residents of of Crexton to get things moving is 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 that is that worth? Is that investment worth it to get this going sooner rather than rather than later? In a perfect world, we would have one developer swoop in and save the day to say, hey, we're going to pay for all this stuff. We don't need any bonding from the city. We'll use tax increment financing. We'll bear all the risk. That would be perfect. If we don't get that, then we have to, as a city and an EDA, have to look at that risk reward. And that's when government steps in, I think, is really it's like, that's why you as the government here have the ability to do projects like this, to set them up, right? To package them up, to to get things going. And and it'd be great, yep. It it would be great then somebody even after the fact could come in, right? We could have a developer come in and just set everything up, right? And we get all the special assessments and all that stuff and we could pay the bonds off perfectly. So it's one of those decisions we have to make that it's not right for every community, but it is right for some. And I'm seeing more and more municipalities kind of stepping up to the plate. You know, how can we get something moving, whether it's housing or commercial? Because things kind of just have stalled out in places and it's really frustrating. If you can get a grant, even even better, right? Because that brings basically the assessments down and all that kind of stuff, right? So free money, free money, free money if we can. But it's really hard to get it all paid for. And I think it's probably near impossible, right? Because it's it's new, it's new development. And you know, there's not a whole lot of agencies that, you know, will give you all of the money. It's like, okay, what's your share now? We're giving you our share now, local, we need a local share. And that's where that comes in quickly. So we can show you all those kind of impacts and things like that too. And just to see what your what your threshold is. But boy, it's really hard. And nobody has a crystal ball to say, we're going to build it. It's going to be all ready to go and they're going to come, bang, 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 unless we have one developer or a couple just ready to roll. So but I tell you, it's it's nice to it's nice to have something to market too, you know? Hey, we've got availability here. It's all set up, ready to go. You know, shovel ready and all that. It's really a head scratcher for a developer, especially to go out to greater Minnesota to to really set this stuff up on their own. So, you know, different areas require a little bit different ideas, right, on things like that. And yeah, so and you've got to, you know, if you have, if you've got good staff, right? And and folks that are able to chase grants and and think of these things and have visions and kind of report back and make sure we have plenty of workshops for the council and the EDA boards to keep everybody abreast on what the risks and rewards are. Hey, Todd, what's the impact of this then? What what will be the impact on a $300,000 or $100,000 house or a commercial building worth 500 grand? What's 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 it worth to them? And will that be on on the books like that forever? We hope not. We hope maybe it's just temporarily. It's just a little bit of a nudge to get things moving, so.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, I was just at a coalition meeting just last week and, you know, I I think everybody's under the same real direction of jobs, you know, housing and I think, you know, building up that task space to make it to more make it available more amenities and things like that. And I think the other part too, that's kind of hard in these situations is that you can't be really advertising all the possible people who are interested in these places because, you know, business is business, right? And so to a point, you know, I think that's also hard and really kind of letting council and the EDA know outside of like, you know, once someone's actually ready to sign on the dotted line. And I think that has to be kept in consideration as well, too.
Yeah, we've got one one park area that needs a little bit tender love and care, right? That we need to do some things to get it at least to a level playing field. We've got one that just needs some infrastructure, right? Some streets and stuff and some connections and extensions. And then we've got another one there that probably we could, you know, we almost think that you could get a developer in there and just say have at it.
Right.
So you've got kind of three different, and that would be housing, that third one. And you've got three nice distinct sort of project areas that have different importance to the to the city. And and so you've got it all. So, I mean, that's it. Those are the three. I don't see much anything different than the three you've got kind of cooking right now. So, yeah.
I think it's just having us actualize that and what that looks like, like more clearly noted and laid out.
Yep.
In terms, and I know that you said it's going to take approximately like three months to
Over the plan, the financial plan for
Right, but I do wonder as we kind of like finalize this budget and talk a little bit more about, you know, we're again talking about things that were assumed to be bonding that are part of that reserve balance that I think a lot of us would like to make sure gets done appropriately, so.
Yeah, I mean, let us know as far as the before you finalize the budget, we could kind of take a look at that. It's nice to have a third eye, kind of look at this stuff. We'll we'll be sort of within the next month, I mean, we're going to be getting into the plan, right? So we're going to start asking staff for, I think we already got some budget information and things like that, which is kind of needed to figure out that reserve too, because it's next year's like expenditures, right? So so those types of things, so we will see. Three months will go by pretty fast because the first one might just be, you know, getting this budget finalized and stuff. And we will be in 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 that already. And then you will see be plugged into some workshops as we as we go through too, right? After we get some some options going, we don't want to show you a whole bunch of crazy stuff, right? We want to kind of focus on what is important to you guys first and then show you kind of options, we'll try to get a couple of them for you, right? Yeah, so that's I I this is just a perfect time to to go through this exercise. I mean, I can't tell you, just more and more municipalities are are getting into these plans, even the bigger cities, right, in the metro area are doing this too. So it's 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 all different. But yeah, this is a great time as far as fund balance is concerned. You don't want to put this off another year.
Right.
Yep.
Well, I also think, you know, and the council's been working on last couple of years is is just creating the, you know, the direction, right? So that's why we did all the assessment of our roads and our sewer systems and of all of our buildings and getting the comp plan in place and all these things. Because, you know, I I think that we know that just throwing things against the wall and hoping something stick is is not not a real strategy. And so I think we we have been pretty strategic in providing and requesting the reports and doing the groundwork. And hopefully this kind of starts to sum up that.
Yeah, I mean, I tell you, this this thing is supposed to work, like when it comes to budget time for next year, you'll have it all set. I mean, the the big, the main food groups will be there, right? Side stuff, all that, thousands of line items are are different. But it'll be for staff, it'll be just kind of a no brainer. And you guys already have bought into it, right? You've already picked your option and moved forward. So that's really what we're doing right now. We're just starting that process right now. And the capital plan is in there too. And I say it's 10 years, things get a little fuzzy after three, right? And because sometimes, you know, we we aren't maybe going to buy that that item, you know, next year or the year after. And then so that gets carried over, right? So there's that kind of modification to the plan as we as we move forward. If it works perfect, then staff gives me the call and says, hey, Todd, I don't know what we're supposed to finance, you know, this police car or something this year, this public works truck or something this year. And I go, you're reading that plan? So, yeah, that it's 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 great. It's it's a great tool, so. Any other questions from you folks at all? For me, I'm just trying to kind of generalize a little bit, make you feel like like you're you're part of the team here, right? So we want to make sure that, because you are, you know, everybody everybody here is is part of this, so.
Just to clarify, would you categorize the items that you're discussing as strategic as opposed to annual oper- operational?
Annual operational is there and strategic, you mean like some funding and those types of things?
Strategic in that this is a good, it is absolutely a good thing for us to move forward
Yes.
With these plans, with the ideas. However, we also have the constraints of our day to day operating budgets and needs.
Oh, it's in, it'll be in there.
That will go forward. And I don't want to lose, I don't want to lose the for the trees for the forest.
It'll be in there. Yep, yep. It'll we'll we'll make sure that that gets funded first. And then some of the capital may have to be delayed or whatever or bonded for or just depending on how important it is on the priority list, right? So that's that's when we start prioritizing projects as well, so moving forward. And strategic too is as well. I know we looked at, you know, the assessment policy just to kind of get off to the left a little bit. You know, that's something too that I I know we're all kind of working on as well because each street is a little bit different, right? When you're assessing too, you know, sometimes you might have five folks on there. You might have somebody on there that has, you know, a gigantic lot and it's an expensive project. And those types of things, we want to maintain flexibility. But so what I don't like like to see, and if you can't help it, is to kind of kick projects out just because, I don't know, they just maybe didn't look right, you know, or looked too expensive for somebody. A lot of the times we can work out those types of strategic options as well just to make sure that some of those projects don't just keep getting delayed and delayed. And again, what was maybe a milling overlay? I'm not an engineer, but maybe it was something simpler, it turns into a reconstruct and no longer somebody waits because there's freezing fine going on in Crexton. Yeah, we're not we're not in Florida anymore.
Yeah.
Yep, so it's those types of those types of things that, you know, we'd be happy to help work out as well.
Yes. Locally and recently, we've heard about special retail taxes that municipalities have adopted to pay for special projects. And I want to make sure that we're also keeping that in mind as a possibility for for funding special
Yes.
Funds that there's a great deal happening.
Yes.
Pool is one of those.
We're talking about the sales tax, right?
Yep, I was going to say local option sales tax.
So currently, it's there's a moratorium, is that not correct? I believe that's correct.
Um.
Well, it's it depends on legislation this year, whether or not it actually is refunded.
I'll have to look, there was last year or whatever. I know a lot of cities held their election in November to approve what was done already. But yeah, I've worked on Detroit Lakes and Herman Towns had one forever. I'm I'm out there, Curran's got one. And and that's easy, I think I, it's easy for me to go to the Department of Revenue and ask them for an estimate because that gets you kind of excited about it. You know, what would the annual estimate of local option sales tax be? And I I might have done that for Corky a while ago or Ryan or somebody back when we first kind of started talking. Because that is a that's a that's a good strategy, especially when you're in a city that that's got some coming and going, right?
Well, and I think, yeah, especially some of our facilities, that's not uncommon for people to be utilizing it that don't live within
Impacts, yep, from other folks. Yep, yep, and that's absolutely, we funded parks and sewer and city halls and
I know, I know, I just talked to the mayor Worthington last week and they had funded their pool, their community center and like an indoor field off of a half cent sales tax for 25 years or two, 25 million, whatever came first. But we were talking about legislation too, and that there's two bills that are out there right now that will probably change the ability to utilize that. So I would like to know, we might need to wait a little bit on that, but if you have something else.
Yeah, let's keep our keep our ears open. And then there's a, I think I I don't have it with me, there's a transportation kind of fund set up too that the states got out there too to help for the street projects or debt service of for street projects too and
Is that the one that hasn't been dispersed yet?
It hasn't, but it's coming from another bucket. But they're going to kind of, and that's something too that, you know, would be nice to take that and put it in like the street recon something, just to kind of start funding, funding that. And then there's franchise fees too. I don't know if you guys, you know, franchise fees, but we do a lot of franchise fee studies as well. We've got a couple cooking out there that folks are looking at as well. And that's just another way to, you know, help with projects because they're not getting any cheaper.
Currently, our franchise fees are already capped at statutory 5%.
You're there already? Good.
They're already there and we just received notice from the cable franchise that they're reducing some of them because of a court decision that came in that any of the in kind contributions. So we're already at the max and they're reducing the amount based on that court decision.
That off our list, so look for that local option sales tax or something.
But finance fee, they are franchise fee, that's just you can go 5% or the max and it's just kicked back to the consumer anyway.
Yeah, it just kind of flows through. That's kind of another way down. Not too many strategies out there. We we try them all, you know, a little bit. It's it's like it's like somebody went on a street, you've got, you know, water sewer and street and assessments and property taxes, it all kind of goes back to the same person. It's kind of just in a different way, right? But but it but it but they are a little bit, they are a little bit different. Some you can deduct on your taxes, right? Some you can't. And and so the strategies are, there's there's some opportunities out there. It's all different for everybody, I guess, too, and senior citizens. Those those folks too, when they pay property taxes, get a little bit back, right? Do their income tax, so that's just a little bit, you know, a little bit of everything, I think, helps. By not just going for, you know, kind of zeroing in on just one funding source, but spread it out a little bit. But it's got, you have to be mindful that it's all fair and equitable, that makes sense too, so. Yeah, a lot of these big projects we do are are so large that when I do a bond issue, I do a a street portion, I do water sewer storm. And and so each each one's paying for itself kind of these days. Back in the day, it was you do a street project, the special assess, you have a property tax, even though there's water sewer, it's kind of, it is what it is. But now now you're really kind of pulling things apart and making sure, again, each sort of use there is being paid from that that source, basically. I think that just that just helps out the project, basically, so. Any other questions from from you folks? Okay. I'm around anytime. You know where to find me.
Right, thank you.
Thanks for having me again. Have a nice Thanksgiving. Don't forget about that.
Okay, this brings us to the agenda. Does anyone wish to add anything to tonight's agenda? Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
To approve, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tim. Is there a second? Thank you, Henry. Discussion, hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Himma?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from tonight's consent agenda? Can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? Thank you, Don, is there a second?
No, sir.
Thank you, Clayton. Roll call, please.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Himma?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We have one public hearing tonight, Ashley, please.
Yes, Your Honor, item 7.01 is a public hearing regarding increasing the water and wastewater rates for 2025.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address counsel? Please come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing. Okay. This brings us to the regular agenda, Ashley, please.
Yes, Your Honor, item 8.01 is a resolution regarding adopting the proposed assessments for unpaid water and sewer charges and current services.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
To approve.
Thank you, Tim. Is there a second?
A second.
And Don? Discussion. Anything on this, Jeff?
No, Your Honor, pretty straightforward, happens every year. These are accounts on properties that have not paid and are delinquent will be assessed to the following year's taxes.
that have not paid and are delinquent will be assessed to the following year's taxes.
Okay, thank you, further discussion, hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Hima?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight point zero two is a resolution approving the nonprofit organization request for twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you, Clayton, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Wendy, discussion.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this resolution regarding the nonprofit grant request, this council heard proposals for previous meeting, uh, we have received clarification from legal uh, based on their guidance from the state attorney general, the opinion, it, our legal opinion is that the city does not have statutory authority to disperse funds, to get kids outdoors, as it may be problematic in distinguishing this organization's purpose from the subject matter and the AG opinion on funding of private recreation programs. I did include the AG opinion as a separate, pardon, as a separate attachment. Uh, the, the opinion from legal did, however, also identify that should this body determine to accept the risk of awarding this grant, that would be a decision for this body.
So Jeff, did you, did they look at the other ones that we were doing, and the other ones seemed to be okay?
The other, the others are okay, most of which have special exemptions, as an example, the senior center, uh, the Golden Link Senior Center, there is a special exemption within statute permitting us to, to support those.
So do, do you need a motion to remove, or just um?
The resolution as is does not have the outdoor, um, get kids outdoors, so it would be, you would approve it as is. It would, it does not have it in the resolution.
It would need an amendment if you wished to add that back in.
Yes. I have a question on that, so that other document that you had sent, Ashley, the public donations one, it does list public recreations in there, um, as public recreation, um, and it could be a nonprofit organization as long as it was available to the public. How is this, I mean, from my understanding, this organization, anybody can go, they don't have to be a member, it, they, if they host something, anybody can go, so my question is, how is that different than anything like the downtown?
Without being, not being an attorney?
Yeah.
And got, based on the guidance that we've been given by legal, uh, it, it, there is a gray area within the AG's opinion, and that is why it was identified that it would simply be problematic in differentiating uh, the group that the AG's opinion uh, directly regarded, I believe, was the Boy Scouts, which is also a nonprofit.
But I don't, but the Boy Scouts is a little different, I mean, that isn't something where just any person can, if they host something, any person can just show up on any given day.
Yes, and again, that would be where the gray area comes in, our legal, the, our attorney has erred on the side of caution, it is within the guidelines for if this body wishes to vote to approve that amount and accept the risk uh, of it being determined by the attorney general as a non-public expenditure, then that would be up to this body.
So what would be the risk?
Yeah, yeah. The risk, uh, that would be a question for Tanner.
Okay.
Probably the risk is, as we set a precedent to do it for one, then we open the gates for a lot of other entities like that, then we're, if we, then we set ourselves up for discriminating against some versus others, probably.
True.
Or litigation by our taxpayers.
Mr. Parnell, you were gonna address something here, please?
If that's okay.
Yes, perfect.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the opportunity, Fred Parnell. Um, we'll get kids outdoors, when I say we or us, I mean get kids outdoors, it's not me. Uh, one, two, twenty-two, three ninety-eight, US Highway seventy-five southwest is our address. This may be a, a point of, of clarification, I did a little research as well, and I'm no attorney. Um, but it talks about in the League of Public Cities, uh, League of Minnesota Cities, there's a document, it says, uh, public purpose expenditures and the criteria for valid public expenditures, and one of them is a public purpose. We do not have a membership, we're not the Boy Scouts, we're not the American Legion, we're not a pickleball club, uh, we're not the Red Cross, uh, we're not the local bowling team, for example. We're a five oh one C three nonprofit, our mission is to provide outdoor activities with educational components for kids, period, that's what we do. We develop and organize activities for kids in our community. Also, it goes along here, it says, for uh, public expenditures, and I'm not, I'm not arguing with your position, don't get me wrong, that's not the point, but just clarification of what get kids outdoors does, and what we will be doing for many years in the future. The other thing here, it says, uh, expenditures benefits the community, I fully believe we do that, okay? Uh, farther down here, it says that expenditure with a private purpose may be allowed if its primary purpose is public. Okay, everything we do is public. We don't have membership, we're a director, that's all volunteer, everything we do is volunteer people, that's all we do. And this uh, you know, there was mention about the Boy Scouts, I have no idea what that's got to do with, with what we're doing, I have no clue whatsoever. That's not, we're not a club, we don't have memberships, we're just a bunch of people providing activities for kids, that's what we're doing.
Was the Boy Scouts like a case study or something, that they were?
They were the subject of the original AG's opinion. I do have up the response from the attorney general's office and our attorney, uh, if the council wishes, I can read those for the record.
I think that might be best.
Uh, the resp, uh, the request uh, from our attorney to the attorney general was regarding public expenditures and review the available league material, city received a request from a great nonprofit organization, Get Kids Outdoors for a five thousand dollar donation to assist that organization purchasing a fish house for children in a community used during the winter. In reviewing league materials, I see the attorney general has issued an opinion indicating a city does not have authority to make donations to the Boy Scouts to help with private recreational programs. I have advised the city administrator that based on the AG opinion, I did not think this would be a valid donation for the city to make. I was asked to check into this further and reaching out to you for your further input. As indicated, this is a great program, and if possible, I think the council would like to make the donation. However, I've been unable to find any authority to make this donation valid. Would the five thousand dollar donation to Get Kids Outdoors be a valid public purpose, public purchase, a public purpose expenditure for the city to make? The response from the league, or not from the league, from the attorney general's staff attorney was, hello Tanner, generally, I would agree that this is likely not a public purpose. The only other exception that may apply would be Minnesota statute four seventy-one nine point nine three five. Public recreation programs, county cities, towns and school districts may spend funds to operate programs of public recreation, recreational facilities, playgrounds. These programs may be conducted independently or coab, or with any nonprofit organization. Ultimately, whether or not this fits your decision, eh, is your decision as a city attorney. And I believe, and I'm expounding a bit, I believe that their, their position here is guided that with a nonprofit organization, not for a pro, nonprofit organization. Um, and the response to one of our council members, uh, from our attorney, uh, see below, the summary of why I think it's problematic is contained in my question to the league. As I indicate, apparently that was a leak, uh, apologies. As I indicated in my question, I truly believe it is a great program, but I believe a court would likely determine the expenditure not valid public purpose, because we do not have express or implied authority to make the expenditure. Keep in mind, state law authorizes cities to spend funds if there's express or implied authority and, the emphasis is in the email, and the expenditure promotes a public purpose. With unauthorized spending, the city could open itself up to liability, including taxpayer lawsuits or non-compliance findings by the state auditors. Based on the information I have, I believe this grant of money would be very difficult to distinguish from the AG's opinion regarding private recreation programs for the Boy Scouts. I would note that the council as a whole can certainly assume the risk and decide to grant the money, but I cannot ethically advise that action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is there any other, is there any other program that the city could do to provide funding? Pardon? Is there any other thing that the city could do to provide that program?
Uh, not from a city standpoint, uh, based on the information I have in front of me.
There are some funding mechanisms within the city, like not within the city, but like the city that have programs as well, I know, Shirley Iverson here, the community fund.
I've seen community.
Area fund.
Yeah, and we applied for that fund, uh, funding, not this most recent one, the spring one, and, and uh, we fulfilled all the requirements for that grant request, we requested monies. Uh, we rewarded half our requests, which is, you know, it's wonderful. Uh, on the other hand, uh, also in addition, uh, we applied for the Minnesota DNR grant, it's called No Child Left Inside. We did that actually about a year ago, we applied for that, uh, and we're rewarded uh, monies that we did use for our summer activity with our kids that we took to Maple Lake and out to the National Refuge, Wildlife Refuge at Rydell's. Uh, learning experience for them alongside with the actual hands-on experience. So um, anyway, so we're in the queue with the Minnesota State, but you know, I understand, you gotta do what you gotta do, and you know, we'll be, we'll survive, and we're gonna continue doing our stuff for kids, and you know, we'll, we'll, we'll be just fine.
Well, I, I don't think that the council doesn't think this is a great program, we do hope that.
Well, I fully, I'm, I'm getting that drift, I mean, I fully understand that, which, I mean, I don't want the city to get in trouble. By this, you know, wanted to have some clarification of really truly what our foundation, our mission is. Okay, so that's clear, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Further discussion.
So again, just as council is aware, this is without the outdoor recreation, so this is just for the Golden Link, Tri Valley, downtown, uh, Kirkston, excuse me, downtown, uh, DCDP, uh, the Ox Cart Days and Scruffy Tales, so.
Okay, thank you, roll call, please.
Fisher?
Aye.
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Hima?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item eight point zero three is a resolution regarding a conditional use permit with respect to parcel eighty-two point zero two six seven nine point zero zero, allowing use of a retail tobacco store.
Thank you, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Make that motion, your honor.
Thank you, Don.
I'll second.
Second by Christie, thank you, discussion.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a second presentation of a similar initial use permit as a different applicant, uh, that came before this body previously, previ- it's the same location, but a different applicant. Uh, the recommendation from staff is to approve, uh, the reason that the former applicant did not pursue is they did not consummate the purchase of the property.
So it's the same property, or just different applicant?
Same property, same conditional use, different applicant.
Further discussion, hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Hima?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight point zero four is a resolution vacating a portion of Fourth Avenue South and Van Street upon petition of majority of the budding landowners.
Thank you, do I have a motion to approve this resolution? Thank you, Tim, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Henry, discussion.
Well, curious, I looked at the, the map of those uh, strips of lawn that are supposed to be streets, and I just want, how, how did that parcel develop that way? We have the DAC on one corner, we have a, a learning center on, on opposite corner, a hockey rink, and then a vacant.
Ground base.
Yeah, and then there's this intersection of lawn.
And every city has, virtually, I'm not gonna say, I've not looked at the records of every city, but I would argue that virtually every city in the country has parcels where roads were originally platted and never developed. Uh, this would be us simply vacating one of those circumstances. Uh, the, the city does not really have any beneficial use for the, for those parcels. Uh, over time, they've historically just been used by the adjacent landowners. One of them actually, I think it has a playground or something.
There's two playgrounds.
Encroaching, and uh, the adjacent landowners, normally the way that a vacation would occur is that a line would be drawn down the middle, and each property owner would get half. Um, in this particular case, the adjacent property owners have declined to accept their half, so we would simply follow the further, furthermost line, uh, vacating the entire street, uh, this to make room for the Tri Valley bus garage that they're planning on putting on the other side, it's already in building department, uh, for approval.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, I'd have looked twice, too.
We'll, we'll, we'll have a bunch more of them, I'm sure. Any city more than about fifty years old has hundreds of these little enclaves of undeveloped roads somewhere. Uh, another one that I've identified is over behind the police station, uh, along the river, there's a road bed there, part of it's been vacated for a city park. The other part of it has not been, and it's still considered a road, even though it's really part of the contiguous park. Just it, there's no reason to do anything as long as it's not hurting anything.
All right, further discussion, hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Hima?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Okay.
Item eight point zero five is a resolution authorizing retaining an attorney to assist the city of Kirkston in evaluating the city administrator and clarifying the roles of the city council slash city administrator.
Thank you, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
To move, your honor?
I'll second it.
Tim and Clayton, discussion, I guess I would like to start it out, I'm going looking for outside attorney to help us with the evaluation of our city administrator, my first question is how many thou, tens of thousands is this gonna cost us?
Well, I think the.
Second question is, is that we are what, hiring, bringing a, an outside attorney in to do counsel, our job for evaluating our city administrator?
Well, the first one was talking with, in the past, like Amy, was the last person that we actually evaluated. She had to do her own evaluation, which meant that she compiled all the information, and there isn't anybody necessarily in the city that would be probably an appropriate person to compile any of the type of feedback that would be needed for the city administrator. Contract states it's six months that they should have an evaluation. We don't have any standard operating procedure in how we've evaluated city administrators in the past. So we talked with Tanner about it, huh?
Yes, there's a form out there that we've used in the past.
With Shannon.
And for the ones previous for.
Okay, so in, in talking with Tanner, we asked, what's the best way to make this the fairest process? And just being able to share information, because council can't necessarily look, it would, to avoid serial meetings and things of the nature, to have one person take all of that information, compile it, and then provide it to council, so then we could have the evaluation, that was the initial conversation. Tanner does not feel, as the city attorney, that it, it could possibly harm his working relationship with the city administrator if he was the one to compile the information, which is why he proposed having an outside lawyer.
Well, I, I mean, I think, I think right now with uh, our budgetary restraints that we're up against right now, I, I mean, I think we can get through a year or so without, I'm doing it ourselves, as opposed to hiring an attorney, we are trying to save some, we are trying to save some. Hold on, I'm talking.
Yeah.
As, instead of, you know, we're trying to save some money here, and if maybe down the road, I mean, we have some assets within our community, we have Corky, who was an attorney, and we could also look to him and ask him what his advice is, and maybe he can draw something up, and.
Oh, wouldn't you still need to pay him?
Probably not as much as an outside firm.
Well, I guess that would be the question, right?
I don't think.
To find out. I guess this is, at the end of the day, two things. One, you're dealing with employment, which means that you're dealing with litigation. So I wanna make sure that we're covering our butts, right, and also making sure that we're being as fair as possible in this process. I think that's really an important piece, and I don't think that you skimp on it just because you have like this concern about this, 'cause at the end of the day, it could cost the city a lot more money if it's not handled appropriately, right? So just throwing that out there as a consideration. I think the other part of this is that how do you and who compiles that information if it is not somebody within the city? Because I don't think it's appropriate for Ashley to do it, because she answers to him. And there's nobody above him outside of us, and it's not appropriate for us to do it, because then it's kind of a serial meeting, right? So having an outside source, which is why the initial conversation happened with Tanner, was to make sure what is the best way for us to do this that's fair, consistent, and provides this SOP for us to provide the appropriate feedback to the city administrator.
I don't think we have enough, I don't think we have, I don't think we have enough information right now on our city administrator to do an evaluation like they like.
Don, according to his contract.
He's got one coming up in six months and then.
Right.
Right.
January.
Right.
I guess I was Elaine, though, on this. Um, I can understand in years if we'd like to budget it, but we are in a budget place. I know attorneys are not cheap. I think that I would rather do a couple serial meetings and save the money and do it.
That's illegal.
It's illegal to do serial.
That is illegal.
We're not allowed to evaluate him?
No, serial meetings are illegal, which is what we're trying to avoid.
I mean, we can, we.
Then I, I just, I'm struggling with painless, and then also trying to clarify what the difference between the city council and city administrator. I mean, have there been issues where we're trying to figure out who does what?
I think there's definitely comments that have been made that are not aligned with what our original responsibilities are.
We had, uh, Tony Clot, and we had Aaron Parish, and we had Shannon. There was a form that the council had to fill out for the evaluation, a set of questions. And then that was turned in to one of the council members to tally them all up, and then it was brought to the.
Also, there probably is something from the League of the Minnesota Cities to get something from them to do an evaluation as well.
Can we just re- revisit that? Because my understanding is that Tanner was one, was involved in creating the last form.
I don't think he was, 'cause this goes back, it was used the same form, I think it goes back to, uh, Aaron Parish.
I don't think so, because I think that there was some litigation that happened in the way that the form was created last time, which is also another concern of mine, is making sure that we're doing this in the most fair and appropriate way.
Oh, let's, let's vote.
Yep.
Let's call for a question. Roll call, please.
So wait, what is the vote on? Is it on hiring?
This will be, yes. So the resolution at hand right now reads that, let me pull it up.
It's right there.
So it just says that we will be authorizing retaining an attorney to assist the City of Kirkston in evaluating the city administrator and clarifying the roles of the city council slash city administrator. So then what this says is that you're giving authorization to have Tanner provide an attorney to utilize, and he specifies two of them there, and if those reach out, he says if they communicate that they do not wanna do it, he would reach out, um, and to see if anyone else would like to clarify. So this is what the resolution. So it would be going out and approving, um, Tanner to go out for that, that term.
So yea, yea is approved and nay is to?
To, yes, to define it, yes.
Right, and I think the, the, for me, the, um, the, the active verb here is assist. It doesn't mean that they're necessarily going to be pouring hours and hours of legal time into the effort.
I believe, yeah. I mean, do we have a quote or an idea of how many hours, a quote, how much this would cost us?
Yeah, that's a, that's a problem.
Well, I think, I think.
This is pretty big.
At the end of the day, the conversation with Tanner was to just have not only counsel, but possibly do like a three sixty words directors and the, the clerk would all provide one form to them, and then it'd be sent to that attorney. That attorney would then compile all the information and then provide it out to council to then have the initial.
So three hundred and sixty degree evaluations are super effective?
Yes.
For sure, but, um, I think we need time to, to put that together, and I don't know that you necessarily need an attorney to do that.
She tabled this.
I think it does, I think it's important to have feedback from the directors and the clerk.
Oh, agreed.
I'm not denying that. I'm just saying I would.
Yeah, I think, I think we could build something. Before I can vote, yes for this, I would need to know how much this is going to cost, or is there a way that we can do this without an attorney?
So, do we say that we table it and try to get quotes?
No.
Let's vote.
Let's call for the votes.
Let's go. Call for the votes.
Fisher?
Nay.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Nay.
Alt?
Nay.
Clot?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Hidma?
Nay.
Jertie?
Aye.
So it is three yeses and five?
Five days.
Correct.
So, good.
So the motion, or so the, uh, resolution does not pass.
Okay. Motion carries.
It does not carry. It fails. It fails.
Motion fails. Resolution fails. Thank you.
Item eight point zero six is a resolution to approve the League of Minnesota Cities Roles and Responsibility Workshop for the City of Kirkston, City Council, and City Staff.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Your Honor.
Thank you, Don. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Henry, discussion.
I think it's always good to have a refresher in knowing what our responsibilities, our council is, as well as the city administrator and our city staff. I think that sometimes, it just is, uh, you know, a refresher doesn't hurt. I think also sometimes, like Wendy, who, for example, hasn't had the opportunity to do like the, um, elected leaders one oh one training, and I think that just having a refresher and also just, um, providing like clearer understanding of what our job responsibilities and roles are is always helpful, especially as we go into things. I think there's been some comments in the past that have maybe overstepped boundaries as far as like what our rules are, what councils, what the staff's rules are, and so I think it would be helpful for us to have that refresher.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I concur.
Okay.
And again, talking with Tanner, I believe this was just, it's not like immediate. It would be out more towards January or February this would take place.
And this doesn't pass, do you think?
No.
And this one is free.
Yeah, it's part of our membership as League.
So there is no cost to this, just to let everybody.
Roll call, please.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Clot?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Hidma?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, this brings us council reports. Uh, start with Morgan tonight. Have anything?
Um, nothing much, but I do wanna address a lot of phone calls and emails that I have gotten from different people within the community, um, about the third rink, um, within the ice skating rink. Um, I wanna clarify, you know, I had made comments, there's been comments made. There was, there was never an intention to close a third rink for budget reasons. All we had asked was Jake to just look at usage. Was it being used? Did it need three rinks? If the usage is up and we need all three rinks and it's being used to its full capacity, that is awesome. That is the best case scenario. That's what we love to hear. That's what we are hearing. That's fantastic. That's what we want. Um, but I think it is also important that we just make sure that things are being used, and if there's other ways we can use it if it's not. So I just, I would like to clear up the air for people that have emails or called or may be listening, that there was never an intention to close a third rink because of budget. It was just asking to clarify the usage and if needed, and it sounds like it does, but that is all that that was, so. Wanting to clarify to the people out there. Other than that, I don't have much.
All right, thanks, Morgan. Christie?
Um, I was at the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities this last week, um, and there was a lot of good discussion. I think, you know, um, it's great to hear from other cities about how they're funding, um, some of these resources like pools and community centers. I know, um, Morehead just, um, is in the process with a pool and community center and redoing their library, and they had gotten a like five million dollar grant from the National, I think Park and Rec Department, and so it was just kind of fun to hear about, um, other opportunities that we can kind of review as we go forward and improve our own facilities. So, um, outside of that, that was all I had.
Thank you. Henry?
Clayton, I'd like to, uh, say thanks for the continued growth that keeps coming. We appreciate that, and other than that, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you. Don?
Yes, Word Four is having a meeting for all the people on Word Four tomorrow night, and also for the downtown people, so to talk about our work.
What time is that?
Five o'clock here and at the, uh.
Down here?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Wendy?
Uh, I just went into, I spent some time at the Cove this past week. I mean, I generally try to spend some time at the Cove, the youth center in town, if you're not familiar with it, and they had their Friendsgiving, so the kids and some of the parents brought or donated money for, um, dishes, and the kids made some dishes, and it was super fun just to hang out and, and, uh, let the kids enjoy the food, that kind of thing. So if you get a chance to participate in any of their, their activities, I would encourage you to do it. It's an awesome place to hang out.
Thank you. Elaine, anything?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Tim?
Um, I had the opportunity to celebrate the fortieth anniversary of our spectacular, uh, Kirkston Library. And, uh, I think, uh, people should recognize what, uh, a really, uh, wonderful resource, uh, our library is, uh, in this community. Uh, really, i- i- it really is, uh, a community gathering a- area for various activities, and, um, you know, they have a, they have a book club, they have, um, they're, uh, it's, uh, it's that game where you go around looking for Pokemons.
Pokemon dog.
They have a Pokemon club.
And first Friday of every month.
And, uh, it was fun. It was, it was nice to see multi-generations of people coming to celebrate our library. Um, I also attended, uh, the Lake Egsey Regional Library, uh, monthly meeting, and, uh, we passed our budget and everybody gave reports on, uh, how things are going in, uh, the twenty-two, uh, Lake Area Regional Libraries. So, uh, we are part of a, an amazing coalition of, uh, library lovers, so that's it.
Thank you. Just wanna say, you know, our Kirkston Library is a gem in Kirkston. It's, uh, it's a wonderful building and it's, it's, uh, I've got no words. It's just a great place to be with a lot of information. Uh, as far as Morgan's comment with the rink, I know I, uh, three sheets. We do have ice in all three sheets this year. I did, uh, talk to a couple Blue Line members and, um, took their point in consideration too, but I told them that any decision we make regarding going down to two sheets or whatever it may be in the future is that Blue Line would be involved with the, in the discussion, so. And they were happy to hear that, so. All right, uh, just a reminder, we do have a council budget workshop following council, so if nothing else, we come before council tonight. We are adjourned. Thank everybody. Well, yeah, happy Thanksgiving. Once again, it's all about the budget review of preliminary budgets to include facilities. Jeff, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just today and actually just in the last few moments in discussing with finance. We've identified a couple of items that we can, of capital, that we can fund without going against the levy through funds that were already allocated to things that we're not anticipating moving forward on. That would be $32,000 for the pay loader. I've spoken with Teresa over Valley Tech Park, $5,500 in battery lights for our exits that can hold off. However, the remaining items. Are still in place, so we were able to get $37,500 off of that total. I did get our workers' comp experience factor today, and unfortunately, our experience factor did worsen. And we've gone from a 78% experience factor to an 86%. Experience factor, which would reduce our discount from 22% to 14.
So what does that mean dollar-wise?
About $30,000.
So pretty much what you just saved in money?
Pardon?
Pretty much what we just saved in money?
We say our workers' comp is going to be reduced by about $30,000 based on that experience factor. And we're also going to be saving about $37,500. So we've got about $67,000 that we can.
Oh, I was taking it as the opposite way.
Yeah, that's what I, that's why I said it was worse, so.
Yes.
So does that mean that you're saving that money or that we have to debit that out on top of what's already in here?
I've already budgeted the full manual premium.
Okay.
So what is in this budget is the full manual premium. I did not have our experience factor to know what to reduce it by.
That's what we needed to know.
And so instead, so we are saving about 14% in our workers' comp.
Which is $30,000.
Which is going to be roughly $30,000 to $38,000 by, as a quick estimate. And we've got $37,500 that we've identified today that we can pay from other sources. So we've got roughly $65,000 to $70,000 that we can move forward. We are getting to crunch time, so the, at this point, the difficult decisions are coming. I did four, I did forward the six budgets requested by the council. Three of them included operating the pool. Three of them did not include operating the pool as per request. You have each of those budgets and a breakdown.
Okay, so just for clarification then, so like for option one, really, our shortfall would really be $25,000?
With the new information, roughly, yes.
Okay. And that would be with the full levy, correct?
That would be at the full levy.
So when you say funding the pool, how do you know what expenses are going to be within the next year?
And what is that budgeted at again? $330,000 or something?
The budgets are, the budgets for each is on the, they're on the tabs to the budget. The budgeted amounts for the pool are based on trends and history.
Then, I mean, the question that I have funding the pool, how?
How do we know what's going to break next?
Yeah, how, 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 how far are we going to fund it? I mean, let's just, I'm just being, playing hypothetically, or what happens if something happens? That's a million-dollar price tag on it, right? So then, what do we do then?
Well, that, what we have before us is simply operating expenses. It does not account for any catastrophic losses or.
So we all know the condition of the pool.
It's under.
And the catastrophic events are inevitable, in my opinion, over the next 12 months even. So how do we fund those?
We don't have the funding for those, sir.
Well, and my concern is, you know, there has been mentioned that there are safety issues with regarding the pool. And safety always should be of paramount importance when we consider things. And, you know, regardless of where we vote and how things fall, if we fund the pool, it should be contingent upon determining for sure that there are no safety risks.
This week, Friday, in cleaning off my desk, I came across, and this was after the packet had gone out. I identified, in cleaning my desk, I identified. I was sorting through and putting things into folders.
This is all one?
On my desk. And in the folder from my predecessor.
Thank you.
There is a signed and sealed engineering study from August of 2023. That identifies an engineering. It involves a preliminary structural rehabilitation recommendation and probable costs. It varies in time from two to five years, depending on the paragraph that you're reading is within the report. But in this report, opinions of probable cost for each work item I'm reading off of page nine. Recommend addressing joist corrosion within five years or sooner and continuing monitoring the amount of corrosion for each year. There are pictures throughout on the condition. Comes to $950,000 in what is viewable. The conclusion that they come, the structural systems of the existing indoor aquatic center building in Crookston are in fair to poor condition. Most of the poor conditions appear to be attributed to non-structural causes, including thermal bridging, condensation, and excessive indoor humidity. However, these issues are leading to failure of roof decking. Cladding materials are causing rust buildup on joists that could eventually lead to lack of adequate strength and stability in the framing. That's off of page 10. They're recommending between $900,000 and $1.2 million.
So, so one of the things I wanted to talk about is, I think, Jake, correct me if I'm wrong. Last year, we had a gas leak in, in the building. And because the pipes were so brittle, they would crumble to the touch. Now, can you imagine if we'd had this? Is that correct, Jake? Did we have a gas leak? Yes, please.
Last year, we, we had some gas issues. It wasn't a leak, but it was a. We were trying to figure out how we can look at going from putting, like rearranging the piping from our chemical room to our, like, boiler room. And at that time, they didn't notice that the gas piping, he didn't want to touch it because it was so brittle. He thought it would fall apart.
Saying that, probably eventually a vibration, a bump or anything would cause probably a major gas leak. If it had happened in the middle of the night, the building would have filled up with gas. And if it kind of lighted, the whole building would have went up.
Is that how that works?
Yeah.
Static electricity.
I mean, yeah, good, I guess. I do believe, however, those pipes have been replaced at this juncture.
That pipe, yes.
And replaced?
It was replaced last year. Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And also, you guys just replaced a couple of things too, right?
Yep. We moved forward with that. I was given the instructions to do that, so.
So the fire panel was replaced?
The point is, you don't know what you know until it's something happens, you know? And you didn't, obviously, if you didn't know those pipes were that bad, you'd have replaced them a while ago. You didn't replace them until you started looking into doing the job that you needed to get done.
Yeah.
So that's a concern that I have when we talk, you know, Tim brings up a very good point of safety. At what point do we fall liable if somebody, if something happens inside the pool? Or we've already talked about a ton of safety issues.
I want to publicly answer.
In this pool, and now somebody gets hurt, then, then where we at as a city?
I have a question. I've, I've heard, I mean, the roof and all of that, and I've heard that sometimes chunks of the roof are falling in. Not falling in, that seems very dramatic, like the whole roof is falling.
It's not, it's not like the, the cement falling in. It's, it's the paneling that Jeff mentioned. There's just corners and things like that are just, they're just falling apart and coming out on the, on the roof.
And what did we just have replaced?
We, we had the.
The fire panel?
Yep, so the motherboard was replaced. So that everything's running the way it should. We have to have two new strobes. And then we have to have one more alarm stroke put in.
How much does that cost?
I'm getting a quote on it.
So the stuff that you know?
We replaced an actuator, correct?
So the actuators, yep. It's, yep, it was the actuator that did get replaced. So Scott and I have graphics for our HVAC system. So we can actually change, you know, heat or anything like that that we need to from our surface pros.
So is, is that stuff in this, is the 2025 budget?
The stuff that just got replaced?
The stuff that you're talking about right now that need to be done?
No, that's, that's, that's been replaced, all right.
Is that 24?
Yes, that's been replaced.
24's budget. With the strobes and all of that.
With the strobes, I'm getting a quote on. We move forward with it. I'm going to get a quote on it.
So that's, that's currently not in the budget?
Currently, it's not in the budget for 2025, no. We found that out last week when, when the watchman fire from Fargo came up. We found out that the two, they're just strobes that go off in the men's and women's bathroom.
I'm not going to hold you to it, but do you have a rough, rough estimate?
I, I, I really don't. I, I don't have one, no. Sorry. I even asked the worker, I mean, I asked the installer, and he said he doesn't have one either, so.
So the, the park board, do they know all this information?
Park board was informed last week. Yeah, we brought it.
But I mean, do they know all the information here?
They did not have this report, no, sir.
Where did you find this today?
This, this was in a file folder in my desk from my predecessor.
Yeah.
He, last year, Corky gave it to everyone here.
I don't recall getting this.
I, I remember reading.
We had, we had another one compared to this.
We've had, we've had this.
We got a 20, 2022, and then I, I don't remember.
2022 was a general facility study for all facilities in the city. This is a pool specific done by an engineer.
Have you tested for mold?
I've tested for asbestos, not mold. And that was done when, when I had, when the state told me that I had to get the pipings fixed. Remember the big main pipe that we, that I got fixed? And then the, the piping underneath on the deck? We also got asbestos at that point, and we didn't have no asbestos in the building. And that was in 20, that was like the first few months that I started working.
Because it.
2021.
It states here, for the pool equipment and maintenance office on the north side, have walls exhibiting moisture staining, efflorescence and mold.
I don't know any mold.
But we haven't tested for it.
I haven't tested for mold, no, asbestos, not mold.
The guidance that we would ask is, with the deadline for passing our final budget, in which direction does the council wish staff to move?
So another question, is there an option in here? Not matching the Red River Valley?
Those are, those are not part of this. This is not part of the operating budget. Those would be part of the capital budget as a separate, as a separate item.
Okay.
Those, both Red River Valley and the rail spur projects. Economic Development is still looking into alternative sources.
Okay.
For financing and funding. We've identified with the state that it's, we're not under the gun to accept or decline those immediately. However, we do, we are trying to exhaust all efforts to find funding to move forward with those projects.
So the question for my peers here is, say, say we funded the pool for another year, do, do we cap it? Do, what, what do we do at, at?
My thing is, is even if we fund it, right? And with that extra 60, that still puts us $30,000 short without a balanced budget. That still puts us in a negative of $30,000, and that's not giving even any budget to maintain it and fix it. Or is there, do you guys have an operating budget for, like, pool maintenance?
Everything, yes.
Right. So what do we have currently in that budget?
In history repairs, equipment, 22 was $7,500, 23 was $10,800. This year, we've exceeded $20,000. We have $25,000 budgeted for the, for the 25-year. Should that be for an operating, building repairs has averaged $14,000 to $15,000. There was $10,000 budgeted in the current year. And we have $20,000 budgeted.
I mean, I thought we had a.
For the upcoming year.
We had an agreement at one time that if something went over $50,000, we weren't going to pay it anymore. And I thought we hit that threshold pretty. We hit that threshold pretty, pretty early. Wasn't there a part that cost in excess of fifty thousand or?
Not that I recall.
I believe the water heater last year would have been that.
Fifteen?
How much was the water heater last?
Fifteen thousand or sixteen thousand.
Something.
I guess my other question on this is. I know that there is some conversations about other funding sources for the pool. And I wonder if we consider. Utilizing what's currently proposed in here and then if it goes over those proposed dollar amounts, then we have to have that conversation again.
That still puts us at a thirty thousand dollar shortfall.
One other thing too, I've seen a lot of, a lot of the people on the petition and a lot of people that are. Writing in are not, do not belong to the city of Crookston, so what I'm wondering is, they're belong to Pope County. So so Gary, has anybody reached out to you? To help support the pool since there seems to be a lot of your constituents from Pope County? That are, that are interested in saving the pool?
We've not had a request.
Yeah, because I I went through and I can't remember the exact number, but I feel like it was right under six hundred and fifty. Now, not the write-in ones, I won't count that. I think that came up to about two, three hundred.
But there was also like multiple. Multiples of this, it was in this one.
I am just taking the ones that were sent to us, the people provided to us.
There's the the Valley Voice and then there was the change.org one.
The one that was provided and sent to the city, that one was about six hundred and fifty actual Crookston residents. Now, I'm not including the people that had the handwritten ones that like came in and brought those in because those ones were hard to read. But if you were to take all of those, I think it was about a hundred and fifty on each one of those. Give or take some, so. I don't, I would, I would love a pool. I did not wake up saying I want to close a pool, but most importantly.
The the.
My goal is to balance a budget.
As if the the budget that we have was was exactly what we're gonna spend. Pro- probably could maybe get behind it, say, yeah, okay, it is what it is. But I I don't for a minute think. That it's gonna go beyond the budget that we have for twenty twenty-five. And then what do we, what do we do at that point?
Here's my question and just, like, this is just me legit asking, like. Even if, let's say, we close it, we still have to budget some to keep it heated to a certain point so it doesn't decay and like fall in on itself, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so what if? To budget the balance or to budget this year's. Or balance this year's budget, wow. We have to close it and there's organizations that want this open and there's people out there that want it. It doesn't mean we're gonna demolish it tomorrow. Can we give them the chance to say, go find the money and raise it and get that participation?
The problem with that, and I agree with that concept, the problem is when something doesn't get used, it goes downhill dramatically, fast.
I guess, uh, conversation with. Carol. They're having a, I don't know what's the absolutely crunch deadline that we're having, Levy. They're having a. Fundraiser on December twentieth. And. Their other thing is, is, you know, this is brand new as far as trying to raise money to keep the pool operational. They are kind of requesting one year. To see what they can do on their end. Just kind of putting that out there.
Well, I think there's that. I think there's a couple of other things too that were even brought through by the superintendent about some other funding sources that could be viable. So.
I mean, with the numbers that, with the numbers that have come through today. Particularly the workers' comp. The reserve calculations. That I have, uh, based on conversations with Holly and Lance. I have roughly forty thousand from Holly and Lance. And I have rough, and I just ran numbers. On the workers' comp. Calculations in. On the spreadsheet. The savings on our workers' comp is roughly thirty-nine thousand. Based on those numbers, if this body. Were to levy the full preliminary levy. It is possible. I feel confident that it would be possible. To balance this budget with the pool operating. With some caveat. That. The utility, just as an example, many of the utilities throughout the budget, I noticed noted this in my report. And the pool in particular. Many of the utilities, as an example. The arena was budgeted at two hundred and fifty-four thousand in twenty-two. It had two hundred and fifty-eight thousand in utilities in twenty-three, but for some reason in twenty-four, it was only budgeted at two hundred and forty thousand. Most of the utilities accounts throughout the budget are similarly. Well, to use a military term, short-cheated. This budget does correct those amounts. The budget that I have for the pool. I've taken my best guess at utilities based on the trends because our trends are all over. Our numbers in twenty-two were seventy-six thousand. In twenty-three, the pool was closed. From my understanding for a significant period of time and our utilities were fifty-nine thousand. Our current budget is fifty-two, which we're already well on pace to exceed that. And the amount that we have penciled for the budget is sixty thousand. So we're doing our best guesses. The trends on this, uh, when you run the statistical analysis, they're not even close enough to each other. To even get a good analysis on. The the regression analysis doesn't come up with valid numbers. We don't have a large enough sample size. Uh, and they're spread just too far apart.
Seventy-six to sixty-seven.
I do believe that we can function, that we can fund. The pool opening. However, in the upcoming year, we would need to be very closely watching. Every line, every line item in the budget and again, that would, that would require us to pull. The two hundred thousand from water. It would require us to use two hundred and fifty thousand of the anticipated interest from our investments. That limits the amount. That we can recoup for our reserves. Normally that would go to help fund or rebuild our reserves. As was noted, this budget is ninety-five thousand short. We've got roughly eighty thousand. I can, I can address the other fifteen thousand with department heads.
And this is with us not putting any, any money towards capital projects and capital funding and.
Correct.
So we're.
That would be with the critical need, oh, critical high priority capital that is listed. Uh, and what those items are.
Josh Correnta.
Is. Let me pull up this correct spreadsheet. I have seventy-five thousand dollars for police motor vehicles. The thirty-two thousand for the payloader, again, I've, we found other sources for that. Turnout gear of thirteen-five, that would likely be one of the areas. I'll talk to the chief to see if I, we can look at some of the fire department's designated reserves to pull that from. So that would be the lion's share of the remaining amount balance. A black top roller for streets of fifty thousand that would have to come from current revenues. Uh, the sports complex. We've got a hundred and sixty thousand for exterior painting and joint sealing. The reason that I'm leaving that in as a high priority is to prevent us from continuing. Down a path that creates the same problem again.
Yeah.
Is the, the sports complexes. Uh, if you're not familiar, it's interlocked concrete pieces that have seals. In between those seals are beginning to wear and are in need of replacement. Uh, sixty-four thousand in glass for the rink. Uh, they can't, they can't operate hockey rinks without the glass. Uh, eighty-one thousand for an air compressor. Board and fire department for their breathing air.
So so that, I I realize they can't operate without the glass, but I mean, is the, is the, is the glass? That's in there now, um, is it, is it broke or?
That's based on the number of broken sheets they average. I'll defer to Jay, Jake, but that's, that's based on the number of sheets that they average breaking and keeping an adequate reserve to make sure that they can keep. Functioning should an event happen.
I also say, I had met with a, I think the pool manager last week and she went over the numbers that were provided, which looked like what we have a year-to-date here. And it was like, she pulled all the credit card transactions and it was like twenty thousand dollars more than what's showing here. Currently, and I just don't think that it's been processed, but like she's able to break it down by dollar amounts on the, the credit card cross, uh, processing. So I also, when you're saying that the proposed revenue from those is thirty-two, I don't know if that's necessarily accurate. So I I'm just saying that there is more to that. Um, I had the numbers, but unfortunately I forgot to bring them, but I am curious to actually know what the real year-to-date is on those numbers. And what that revenue actually looks like.
I I can work towards the trends and I can work with finance to get that. I would have appreciated having that information. Prior.
Yeah.
Rather than it being dumped on me during an open meeting, ma'am.
Yeah, well, it was just provided, so.
So for the glass?
So on the, on the back two rigs that we have with the CSC, all the glass is a half inch thick. What we're running into is when we have high school or college on those back rigs. Uh, the ends of the glasses are getting, they're getting broke. I mean, they're just, they're not thick enough. So I I put in the budget to to get five-eighth inch thick on the.
For the end zones.
On the end zones, yeah.
So. Can can they be, so when you replace them, are you putting in the thicker one, one at a time?
I, yeah, yeah, I, but I'm out of glass currently, so that's why I'm. Trying to get a, um. New glass five-eighth inch so I can get it all the way around.
So are you gonna replace glass that's not broke?
Yes, that would be in the budget.
Right, so what?
So what right now happens is when they break. I go ahead and order and I think there are roughly six sheets was twelve thousand dollars, thirteen thousand dollars. Um, so when I, and we're already out of them, like I have no replacements right now. Um, I have replacements, but they're not the big pieces of glass.
My question is, is when you get them in, are you gonna take out all the good ones that aren't broke?
Correct.
And do what with them?
I'm gonna replace them with five-eighth inch and then.
What are you gonna do with the ones that aren't?
When I need to replace, that's all I'm gonna have.
As a backup?
Yes.
So you're gonna put the thinner, you're gonna put the thinner glass in as a backup?
That's what I'm gonna have to do until I can get everything replaced, yeah.
Wait, wait.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is, why don't we just.
To replace it?
Replace it when it breaks, have have some on hand and replace it when it breaks. So you're not replacing good glass initially, then we can maybe save some money.
That makes better sense.
Sorry.
So that that, that's what I'm proposing is, instead of just going and 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 then replacing it with a thinner glass when it, if the thicker stuff breaks or. What if the thicker stuff is good? Now we got a bunch of glass that.
Sitting there.
We, we, we're not gonna use.
Good sell.
I I think the other thing I'd really like to see if we do consider the pool is like addressing some of the concerns that they've had in the past, which I think also can then. Effect budget and revenue is like consistent hours. Um, and then I think there was maybe some miscommunication.
Christie, I was, we're talking about the class, yes, we have a finish that, is that?
Yeah, oh, I thought that you.
No, I'm not done, so I mean. What, what, what is that a possibility?
That is a possibility if I can get funding for.
So, yeah, we could.
Anytime a piece of glass breaks, you just want me to order a five, a five-eighth inch glass for that?
Well, I'm not saying just have one and then if one breaks, have, have to order another.
Yeah, maybe having a couple on hand.
I'm just saying having a few on hand instead of.
I believe, I believe what we're saying is, is we leave the half-inch glass in place until it actually breaks.
Yeah.
Let's let it serve its life.
But also, if you need to order a couple. A couple to have them on hand, that makes sense, but just to replace perfectly good glass doesn't make sense.
How many sheets are on, or glass are on the end zones, Jake?
Uh, it's nineteen to nineteen or twenty. I don't have a.
So I mean, we're, we're.
That's both end zones, twenty.
No, one side.
One side.
How many average do you break in a season?
Last year, we broke around six, the year before, four. But we had extra and I bought extra.
Yeah, I I think we should buy some ten. Five-eighth thick glass. When the half-inch stuff breaks, replace it with a five-eighth and continue to do that until eventually they're all replaced.
Yeah.
That, that saves money.
Yeah. Okay, are you done?
Yep, thanks. I mean, is that, is that?
Makes sense.
Jeff, are we, move forward with that?
I I I think we can come up with a number on that. What what would be the cost on ten sheets?
I got it, I got it. They're all different sizes, that's the problem.
Ballpark?
Hmm. No, not even ballpark.
Yeah.
They're all different sizes. They all come in different widths, right?
Because of.
You know, you have the door on each end, yeah, so it's just, it all, it all depends.
I mean, I I would think. You know, eventually we get the, we get the main.
The main's already five-eighths.
Okay.
That's all five-eighths.
All right.
So that two rigs.
All right.
That I'll have.
I mean, if you, if you come to the council and say, hey, it ain't working, then we can go down and, I'm just. We're, we're in a budget crisis. I'm just trying to think of ways that we can save money any way possible.
Is it possible to also look at repurposed, uh, glass sheets?
No.
Instead of brand new, maybe somebody pulled some out of a rink that they're not using anymore? It's possible. I just Googled it and it came up.
It's possible to look at. You still ask the people who are selling, for sure?
Okay, I'm done.
So, yeah, I, yeah, I would just say that if we're gonna move forward with the pool, I I think two of the things that I heard. Loud and clear was just the inconsistency of the times and hours and making sure that that's more consistent. And then I know with the utilization of the schools at times. There just wasn't a lot of work between, I think, the city and the school about making sure that. We're available when they want to utilize us, especially if we are charging them the thirty thousand dollars to utilize the pool. Right, but I'm just saying, I just want to make sure that we're being better stewards of that and 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 partners.
Well, the, the other thing is, is if we do decide. As a group to to go forward for one more year. What are we expecting? The, the. The clubs that are forming around this to do once, you know, how much are we expecting them to put in? You know, to continue to go down this path. I mean, obviously, we can't continue to do this for multiple years anymore.
I feel like there's all kinds of things, right? One thing is increasing the membership fee, which is, what, what is it, thirty-five dollars a month or something like that? It's, it's really low, right? Which is awesome, but could be a little higher.
I would say, I would like to see if this stays open, that people that live outside of Crookston pay a different rate.
Yeah, me too. I was gonna bring that up.
I mean, we ask people out with water to pay double. Why would we not ask people outside? We're asking. People to live, that live here and I'm sorry when it comes down to it in their taxes, six hundred people with multiple households.
I think we need to sit down and look at the rates and, you know, try, try to get it to. You know, look at the number of folks that are using it on an annual. We could come up with a number. And 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 figure out how much money we need to try to raise to.
Because I, I, I'm just, I just, when it comes down to it, we're asking a majority of our people.
To pay for something.
To pay for something that they're not using.
Right.
Because I, that's great that they had that out there, but I'll even round up. We asked eight hundred people. Some of it looked like it was children's signature, not taking away, they should have the same rights to write those petitions, but it's households, right? Multiple people, I looked at all of the addresses. It's one tax base, right?
So some of the people that I talked to about the pool, they're very against getting, I'm like, so when's the last time you've been at the pool? This one person said, oh, it's been about ten or fifteen years, but my kids, my, so it's nostalgic.
It is nostalgic. It's just like the Red River Valley show play. It's the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not taking it away, but I'm, I'm also hearing from people that they, because of the economy where it's at, we're raising their taxes. And we're asking them to pay for something that a majority of people here aren't using.
We're gonna have a truth and taxation meeting coming up. I guarantee you, if I ask all of those people that are coming for that. I I wanna, I I wonder what they're gonna say about. More of their taxes and I I just want to know what they're gonna say. So I, I mean, last year wasn't a fun meeting to go through and this year doesn't, doesn't look like it's gonna be any better.
Right.
So I mean, I, one of the questions I want to ask everybody that's gonna come in and voice their opinions on us is, what do you guys think about? So I mean, I, one of the questions I wanna ask everybody that's gonna come in and voice their opinions on us is what do you guys think about funding the pool? And I wanna, I, I'd like to hear what a lot of them have to say. So I mean, I, I get the, I get the, I, I, Morgan, I didn't wake up one day and say, I wanna, I wanna close the pool. I, I don't wanna, that's not the objective here. The objective is, is the cost of keeping this thing open because of all these things that we don't even know about that are gonna break. And we're, we're sitting here each month trying to.
Figure it out.
The point of the hours and being consistent on hours, a majority of those hours not being consistent was because it was closed for a break, right? Like, and maintenance and so.
Well, I think also staffing issues.
Right, and staffing issues and.
But I don't think that's been the case lately.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think it comes down to it, if there's maintenance and all of that, like.
I mean, we even, we even went out of, we even went on a limb to hire somebody dedicated to run the pool and that didn't work.
And I will tell you that, and you guys probably confirm with me, but once that person was gone and then it was turned over to the city again, it became a lot more consistent.
I mean, she worked for the city.
I know, but I'm just saying, when it wasn't her and it was like Andrea and their pool supervisor, it became a lot more consistent. So I think that was just some oversight there. So I'm just saying that it, it's been like that lately, um, just to the credit of those who manage it.
I mean, we can all say, I think the best the pools ever run is back when Brecken was probably over there a lot and it just hasn't had the same sense, you know?
Well, I think I would say, and I don't know, Jake, if you have any feelings on this, but it's, the supervision of it now has been a lot more consistent and.
I would agree a hundred percent. Like now that, um, you know, Andrea has stepped in with some administration things and then Amanda Abraham, some we hired as our, as our lifeguard supervisor. Um, you know, she's trained now to certify lifeguards and we moved forward with things like that. I think on a, on the operational, like a day-to-day operation, and Carol, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but, um, it, it has run a lot smoother, um, since we made that transition. And I believe in, that was back in January of twenty, or this, this year, roughly the end of January, uh, January around that time. So, um, yes, it has, um, Scott too, um, Scott's been taking over like the mechanical and, and the maintenance side of things. Um, and so it has, it really has run a lot smoother.
So Jake, I, and Jeff, I know we're getting down to crunch time, but is it possible to, to get some, um, registration fees changed in, in a relatively short amount of time, just to see how much the potential of?
We do have, we do have a fee schedule meeting coming up in December.
I mean, I think we should drastically change.
Citywide fee schedule, that is part of it.
The, the pool.
The only thing that I, and I would be remiss if I did not identify this. This budget is operating only. There, it is normal in municipal budgeting every year to have money set aside for future capital projects, for future capital expenditures, for fire engines, for fire hoses, for bunker gear, for police vehicles, for parks and rec vehicles, for those types of items that are not normally bonded for, they're not high dollar. This budget does not set any of that money aside. This budget is operating only. If the council, I serve at the will of the council and I serve at council's directive. If the council directs that the pool stays open, we will write a budget that will keep the pool open. However, that budget will not include that funding for those future expenditures because it will not be available.
So, so question if, um, we have our truth and, when's our truth and taxation meeting?
December seventh?
December ninth, six o'clock.
So if we have an overall, I mean, say we're, let's just pretend we're, we, we are agreeing to fund the pool for, for twenty twenty-five. And then we have an overwhelming response and the truth and taxation folks that come to visit and say, hey, we hear a loud cry to not do this, we can change it at that point then, right?
Yes, we can.
It has, we just have to submit our budget by December, was it twenty-seventh? Is that what we said?
It was twenty-seventh.
I, I, just to the point of the capital fund, like, that's where I'm struggling with. Like even with all of that, again, as I said, like I didn't wake up wanting to close a pool, but it's just, I'm in a good situation we're in. And I'm sorry to, to leave money aside on things that we know we're gonna have to do and to spend money on something that we don't honestly know how much it's going to cost us to keep it for an entire year and maybe budget and be at full rate, full levy, like, that is where I'm struggling.
I mean, right, right now, I, I think we're all lying to ourselves if we're not seeing the writing on the wall for this pool. It's just not feasible to continue to stick money into a building that's crumbling around every time we do something here. We've got, we've got a bunch of revenue stuck in here and now this thing goes down. So over a period of time, we've got some pretty new parts that add up to a lot of money, but it's still not gonna keep the pool.
Right, and like, that's where I'm, I wish the budget was not the way it is, right? Like, this is not what I want. I'm just really struggling with not having a balanced budget. And then if we go with the pool and we're not putting money aside on anything else, and then next year or five years from now, we're back here trying to figure out, well, how are we paying for something? How are we paying for a new car? Things for our other departments that are needed. Like, that is just where I'm really, really struggling, is making.
I, I've, I've struggled with this for, forever. I mean, I, I, I challenge anybody else to sit in our seats right now and do the best job they possibly can for the city and try to keep people's tax rates to where they can afford to live in Crookston and try to keep the amenities that we need to have to, for people that wanna come here. It's, it's, it's a challenge. And I guess that's why we get paid our five hundred dollars a month to, to sit and, to, to do this.
It's to your point, we just have to be good fiduciaries to the entire community and not just a part of the community.
That's, that's where my mind always goes. And that's why constantly, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm throwing out there the, you know, the amount of people that are constantly using the pool on a, on a daily or weekly basis just doesn't add up to the, the money that we're gonna spend for the mass of our, of our Crookston residents. I, I, I would like, if, you know, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, if this came down to a citywide, wide vote to, to fund this for a year, I'd like to know how it would, would people be willing to pay the tax to, to, to keep it going? And I, I, you know, obviously we've seen the petitions, but like I said, a lot of them are from outside the, the, the city of Crookston, which I don't represent. I represent six, um, ward six residents only, you know, so I mean.
Yeah. I mean. I'll speak to that. I, I'm, as a, as an at-large council member, my constituent base is, you know, throughout the city. And I've heard more people indicate in their communication with me that they would support a tax to keep the pool open than the reverse.
Yeah, I would say the same. I've actually not had anybody who's asked me not to vote for it, but see, I have.
Yeah.
Well, it's great, I'm just telling you.
Yeah.
I haven't received it. I will also say this, just to lean, like, yes, we are, are, are ward reps, but we're also our city reps. So, I, and just clarification, like, we also represent the whole city in making our decisions. And, and like, I understand that people are mad. Like, I'm mad. Like, I am mad that we are in this situation. Like, I understand the strong feelings that people have. Like, it's a not great situation.
The thing with me is, the, uh, it came off with the closing of the pool. There was no discussion on the future to bring either another pool, to work on something. And I know that it's not in the budget, but all it is, is we're closing the pool and that's it. No further discussion, nothing looked into. And that's what kinda frustrates me.
I, I don't understand when you say nothing looked into. I mean, this is what we looked into. I mean, this is.
Well, I, I think what he's referring to is like, what are their alternative funding sources? Are there other grants? Are there other things that we can do to assist with, like, upkeep or building out? And I can understand where you're feeling that way, but I can also say I've been on the EDA for two years now and those discussions are happening. Those are discussions that I've been having with Carrie. These are things that have been happening. Like, I understand not everybody's in those things and not having those meetings, but these are things that I have been asking, that I would love. A pool, a community center, people have asked for basketball, people have asked for walkingways with Koshon, like, these are things that have been asked and these are discussions, like, these are things that we're looking at. There's a new grant that just came out. Like, these are things that I have been following, other people that I talked to have been following. And like, I understand, like, where it came across, like, it just came across as we're closing the pool with no other options. But those discussions maybe having had, it might not have been here in the center, right? Like, I understand how that perception can come and perception is reality. But that, I don't like the thought that they're just saying that people are saying that, like, all of us came up here and didn't think of any other option. I have had these conversations with citizens. I've been having these conversations for, with many people for a year and a half, for two years. And even before I came on the council of trying to find this stuff. So I would love to have another option, like, as I said, like, people, I'm mad. People should be mad that we're in this situation. But when it comes down to it, we have to balance a budget and we have to make sure that our essential needs are taken care of. And I love Parkin Rock. I have kids here. I think it is an essential need here. But when it comes down to it, water, sewer, fire, the police department, those are essential that, like, make me literally be able to live. Parks and rec is a thriving thing. And I, I don't wanna cut anything. Like, I, I'm choosing to live here. I'm choosing to have my family here. I'm choosing to be on this council to make it better, but we have to make a decision. And it doesn't have to be now, but I think this is just things that we have to think about moving forward, that like, yes, in three years, can we talk about a city tax or like a sales tax to do that? But we can't, we can't. That is months, if not years, of lobbying and trying to plan, right? Like. I would also like to explore the two options that we're looking into. That the funding source set available through the superintendent, and then there's another one that's been brought forth. And I'd like to know a little bit more about that before we make any decisions.
So the, the deficit on the pool, what, what is, maybe we're down to what now? It was three fifty, but it's.
That deficit was ninety-five, ten, if we did option one. And then it went down to what? Jeff, seventy, you said? You took off that?
Pull up the.
No, just the, the operation of the pool. Wasn't it like three hundred and fifty thousand?
Three thirty, I think.
The total, eighty? Total expenses budgeted in the budget, in the current budget that y'all have that keeps the pool open is three hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and eleven, with a two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eleven dollar deficit.
So I mean, how much fundraising would have to happen on the side to, to make anybody here feel good about sticking the money into a, a building that's crumbling?
I'd rather do fundraising to build something new.
Right, right. To be honest with you, I, I've, I've, I've talked about it a couple of times. I'd be, I'd be more inclined to stick money that we're not putting into this pool and setting it off to the side and start getting the ball rolling for a community.
Something.
Something.
You know, again, I think this comes back to the, the Plan B too, if not this, then what are the alternatives? Did we ever find out if any of the hotels were considering or?
I've, I've heard that, um, The American is open to pa- pool, to selling pool passes. That, uh, they haven't, the owner has not gotten back to me. I spoke to his manager, but the owner has not gotten back to me with any final answers on that.
What about Cobblestone?
Pardon?
What about Cobblestone?
I have not heard back. I left a message, but I haven't heard back. That was some time ago. I can reach out again.
I would really like to know if there's other options too, because I think at the end of the day, that's.
Well, we, we heard from a couple residents. I think there are residents for people that use the pool and held that they, you know, then, then really liked that option.
I mean, it's not ideal. It is not ideal, but I think it also provides an alternative.
I, I don't.
No, I don't either.
And I think if we're making these decisions, like, like, I would like to have that as something that's available.
So the direction is, is.
I mean, I think we should possibly select two options. One with the pool, one without the pool, and then decide on the last option once the truth and taxation meeting happens. Cause I think we're gonna get an airfall there. Anybody else have a thought on that?
I think that's an option.
Then you should go to the vote.
Huh?
City vote on it.
I have some money too, though.
I mean.
And how can we organize that quickly? Most money.
I mean, I think we're gonna get a good pulse of what, uh, what, uh, what a lot of people want us to do at the truth and taxation meeting.
Well, I think we also have to consider the goodwill of the community. And there's been such, uh, uh, a strong, passionate response to the issue of the pool. And keep in mind, you know, we just had a tremendous success in the community of fundraising for an all-inclusive playground. You know, that's, um, that's an indication that, uh, you know, there, this community is very supportive of amenities and resources for our, our children. And I think, you know, when I, when I consider, you know, the aspect of the pool as an amenity, you know, uh, amenities are, are not generally, uh, funding themselves. There's a subsidy that's sort of, uh, built in to a community amenity. And how do you, how do you value an amenity for a community that enriches their learning, that allows for a broad, uh, 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 array of, uh, of people of all ages to use it for learning, for strength building, for, uh, community building, um, you know, I, I think we have to, uh, when we're looking at these options of, of, uh, a budget with a pool, a budget without, please consider that those are really, um, i- important, uh, um, points to meditate on.
Jeff, can I ask really quick? Uh, option six, is that making the assumption that, um, we'd be at full tax levy?
Uh, let me.
Yeah, cause it's the same as one.
Yes.
Tax levy minus the four.
I mean, just, just for the two options to, to get it cut down, I'm looking at option one with the pool. And then the, the next one is, um, op- option six. That's with no pool.
Question, could we go with that money coming back, right? So, could we go with option five?
Yeah, option five would almost be completely level if, with the money that you, that Jeff had just said that we saved. It would be, it would drop it down to twenty.
We're gonna be no shores.
Option five, option five is possible with the dollars that we found in the last twenty-four hours.
Right, or if we do the tax levy and go with option six and then take less out of water, which then gives us a better rate chance of.
I would recommend taking less out of the investment.
Sure, whatever.
So we just need a consensus going forward or how do we, how do we decide as a group of which, which ones to move forward with so we have a better understanding?
Well, at this point, one, with, with the numbers that we've come up with in the last twenty-four hours, one, five and six are in the realm of possibility.
Four, just six.
Four, it would be very difficult. Uh, we would, we would have to make cuts to other operational items in order to make forward.
So can we move forward with one, five and six until? Does that help you, Jeff? I mean, does that?
I can make, I can make those adjustments, uh, just playing devil's advocate because it is in the realm of possibility and this is more of a what-if moving forward. Our tax cap. Our tax capacity from last year to this year went from 5.1 million to 4.85.
Right.
We lost 260-some thousand or 240-some thousand dollars in available revenue.
Yeah.
The real estate market, I would say, has not really turned up significantly. I'm not active in real estate right now. I'm just off the cuff to some extent. The question that I would have is, this budget, again, does not contribute anything to our reserves. It is operating only. What do we do next year if we get another reduction in our tax capacity?
Six, six does. Option six does.
It, I don't think it would, but if we had that extra, what, 60-some, 70,000?
There's a, there's a small piece that we could put, that from the interest, that would then go back to the tune of 60 to 100,000, somewhere in that ballpark. But that, as far as significance, as the auditor mentioned, the general fund, a significant amount they identified for the general fund was, I believe, a hun- Lance, do you recall, was it 144,000? I remember one was 77. They had a couple of them that were over 100. But when we're talking the size of budget that we have, that 70 to 100,000 is, if we lose another 200,000 in tax capacity in addition to this year, and I, and I'm not saying that that's going to happen, but it is something to happen.
So the best option then to do, to, to contribute for that, is that option six? Is that what you're saying?
That would be the best option to contribute, that would leave funds available on the table to go to reserves for next year.
So Jeff, is this something then that we could look to Ellers to...
Yes.
Get some, some direction on, to some, or some consultation on? They offered to help us with this current budget situation, and I'm wondering if that might not be a bad idea.
I think really to address those issues about capital, and what are their other options, and, and how we could maybe put those in different buckets.
With going with option six, is what we're saying? And then use Ellers to help decide where it goes?
With Ellers, we don't have the time anymore, do we?
Well, they're not gonna be able to address this in the next three months, but I think going forward for the coming years, we're accounting for what could be our tax capacity for the next year. That's where they're gonna be able to help us in making these decisions going forward.
Ellers is going to be a very solid resource for strategic planning. Ellers is going to be an excellent resource for our capital funding, for our long-term funding. I have full confidence in CLA and our staff in our operating needs. I believe that we need Ellers as a comprehensive approach to our budget, because our budget needs to be comprehensive. Our budget does need to not only look at our operating, but also look to our strategic needs, to our capital needs. And I believe Ellers does play a part in that. I don't, however, believe that Ellers is the appropriate venue to move forward with our operating budget, as I feel that our current staff is well versed in that, in that field.
Are you just trying to sell us another service?
For their current services?
Listen, I, I'm not opposed to try it for a year, just to see. Because listen, we've, a lot of us have been doing this, and it doesn't seem like each year that I'm doing this, it doesn't get any better. So I, I...
Well, and I think the things they've provided or even suggested in the past year that we could have implemented could have been pretty helpful for us already.
So I don't...
I'm not against...
Ellers does not help us right now to get through the end of this year.
Eller, again, Ellers is a very good tool as part of a comprehensive approach. The day-to-day line item budgeting is generally best handled by staff. Ellers can give us the overviews, the strategic planning, the long-term cash policy type input.
That's what we, yeah.
But again, as, as the mayor said, remember, they're free because, their, their advice now is free because they get paid when we write a bond.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
I would also say that they've been giving us free advice for a couple of years. So just want to say that they've been good partners as well.
Yeah, they have.
Well, the, the one thing we have to look at is if we do take them on, it should be a, a net, a positive net effect, right? I mean...
This, this body did vote at the last meeting to accept.
Yeah, we are taking them on.
Not to exceed 25,000 for the, for the plan. So they are on board, pardon me, and we are partnered.
Then the thought is, we should, looking at it, we should, we should get more than 25,000 in budget opportunity. I don't know how I'm saying, but we should find better ways to run our budget, yeah.
Forward, yeah.
So anyhow, so what are, what are we deciding? Are we, are we going with option six for the no pool one? And option one, for the wind pool one?
So with that regard, can I just ask your question? So when we say option one, bottom line, 95, one short of balancing, does that, if we look at that 67 that we found, and an additional 30 from the school district?
The school is already included.
Oh, it's already in there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We found 70, right? Isn't that what you said?
Uh, we're roughly 70,000.
So really, this...
Rough numbers. I, I would need to find about 25,000 in the budget. My hope is that some of the departmental capital, we can also...
But that, but that puts us behind eight ball.
That's not, it's not helping our case long-term, but it will get us through the short-term crisis.
Outside of the critical need, which is, not the payload or any longer, but the place car.
Uh, air compressor.
I have approximately, let me pull up the right sheet.
Do you have some capital there?
With, with only this critical, we're kicking 680,000 in capital down the road.
Can you tell me where that is in here?
200 and, 215, or no, I'm sorry, 140,000 for a plow truck. $10,000 to set aside for fire radios. $10,000 for a new interview room recording system.
Is there a tab for that on here?
Pardon?
Is there a tab that we can see that?
There's not, there's not. I have it on a separate capital list. I'm actually using Morgan's color-coded version that she provided that I sorted. $20,000 in servers and equipment. That was not, I did not consider that high priority because we've just replaced them. But that is something that will be coming up usually every four to six years.
Can we get a copy of that, so we know what's on that?
Absolutely, I can send it now.
For what you are deciding to actually utilize this year?
Those servers and equipment, Jeff, that wasn't a requirement to be compliance with the, the police force stuff?
Uh, not in any, here that's already been, been taken care of.
Is that a separate line item? The place item, place servers?
Yes. Well, actually, the police servers are not.
They're not a separate line item?
Not that I believe. Not in this year's capital list.
Darren, is that been completed?
I don't believe that they were listed in this year's capital because they were just replaced.
Police servers are under IP. They just live...
No, but I'm just saying, are they up to date? Are we in compliance?
We are.
Okay. And are, will we be in compliance for a while? Is there a concern with them being out of compliance soon?
No, they should be long-term. We, we, we got everything up to the PCE standard this year, so.
Okay.
It should be something that replaces them.
All right, so what is the additional need for the servers then?
I think it was just a bank over additional...
It's an annual contribution to cover the full cost of replacement in the future.
Okay, okay.
Best practice is generally for all of these items, you would set aside based on their life expectancy, their total cost and an annual cost, and you would set aside that annual cost so that when the time comes to purchase it, you have the funds available. Right now, we're kicking a significant amount of that down the road.
Again, so if we do go with option one, that accounts for no catastrophic issues with the pool. That will come across, and then we could, we could theoretically have, be having a discussion in January or February of how we're gonna fund the pool again because something major broke down. This could be an ongoing...
Well, do you think it'd be more prudent that we go up to the limits that we've currently budgeted for? And if it goes over that, then we have that conversation?
But then what money do we have to fix it, if we go over that?
No, I'm just saying that if, if we, if it goes over that, then we would have to have the conversation again about whether or not we are gonna consider on. I mean, if we're gonna go that route, we might as well just, I mean, those could be the limits, right?
I'd feel better of having a cap of...
Yeah, cap it at whatever the budget is for those replacements, right? Doesn't that make sense?
Or have outside entities stick in whatever they can to pay for the fixes.
Yeah, if that can happen.
But I, 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 I just, I just don't feel right not, not being prepared for the 2026 budget either. I mean, I think we're, I think we're just, I mean, I don't want to say delaying the inevitable, but... I think we are.
That drives me crazy, just thinking.
Well, it wasn't that for yourself.
But yeah, obviously, no. So everything to the right here, Jeff, just really quick on your critical need items, or the ones that we're actually covering this year?
The, the critical items, those are the high priority items that I had listed.
Those were the ones you budgeted for, though, that's a mistake?
Those are the ones that have been budgeted for.
Okay.
So...
And the battery lights have been removed, correct?
Uh, the battery lights are being, are going to be removed.
Hey Jake, is acrylic cheaper than glass for the pool, for the rinks? Have you looked into that?
It's an NHL style glass, it's tampered glass that they use.
But I, in some research that I've done, there are rinks that use acrylic, half-inch acrylic.
I did that at the old rink, and then when we transferred and got the new one, they had, they came out the new NHL style rink glass, that's the tampered glass. Easy to clean, things like that, that you can use.
You can't get scuffs, park marks and stuff off acrylics.
When it breaks, it shatters into a million pieces. It's the only downpour, but...
So we're looking at one and six, five, or just one and six?
I, I think five should be included, because I mean, truth and taxation is gonna be hard enough without people being like, we're just gonna be at the highest level we could think of. So I think we have to have at least another option with a slightly lower tax.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
We got marching orders again?
Yeah.
I will tweak one, five, and six.
Five and six.
To get the best bang that we can with the information that we received today from the league insurance. And so tomorrow and Wednesday, Holly and I will be digging into numbers. I just want, like I said, I just want a voice to the council again. These budgets are operating only. There is no reserve.
But in option six, there's a chance to put something into reserve.
Pardon?
But with option six, there is a chance to put something.
There is, there is a chance, but it's still not going to be signi-
It's not a lot, but it's a something.
It's not going to be significant. As an example, the fire department, the draft fire department capital improvement plan for their vehicles, equipment, and building maintenance, which includes water heaters, AC units, and such, is 208,000 dollars a year. That's just the fire department reserve requirements. And none of these options will even contribute that, and that does not include any other departments. And Parks is a double or triple-sized department that the fire department is, probably three or four times the amount of equipment.
I mean, I think it's just, I think we just need to get through this year to 2025, and then we just go to work, you know, we get our, we get our audit done on time next year. And then we start the budget process way earlier. We have a lot more opportunity to, you know, look at options and, and come at this budget with a, on a fresh note, I guess. I mean, nothing we, nothing we're gonna do this year for 2025 is going to really contribute to the, I mean, really, unless we're gonna have the full levy that we started out with, and even at that.
No, we're...
I mean, so you, you really, out of your six options, you really don't have an option for...
And that, unfortunately, that is, sure, that is exactly where the numbers are pointing.
So, I mean, it's not, it's not really relevant any of talking about right now, 2025, because it is what it is. So we just gotta, gotta get through 2025.
And is my understanding that CLA will have us completely up to date and balanced budgets and like by three months from now?
Pardon?
Is it, is it that we'll have everything where we have, the things that we're addressing in our audit will be completed in the next three months as far as balancing the budget, or balancing the, the monthlies? What were they? The reconciling, the bank statements will be complete in three months? We'll be up to date now? And as well as the fund balance classification should be completed?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and as a council, we're gonna have it like every three months, the, is that what the goal is?
The goal is to have quarterly financial, quarterly, quarterly financial updates with our year-to-date breakdowns by departments.
What is your expectation that in March, at our first meeting, or April maybe, since it's three? Is it gonna be in March? Would it be in March, right?
It would probably be, it would need to be in April.
So that would be for the three months?
March out.
So that's your expectation, this coming April, we should have in our hand that report?
Should have, you should have a report for the first quarter.
Okay. Okay, good. You're adjourned.